In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on March 29, 2012 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we need a roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Ms. Bogachowski?
Here.
Mr. Gillette? Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley? Mr. Kint?
Here.
Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Paget?
Here. All right. Moving along, we have our correspondents listed, and then we're on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Dr. Paget. It's my pleasure to share with you tonight as part of our continuing effort to spotlight the wonderful things that our students are doing around the district. This evening, we're going to focus in on the middle school, in particular, the HMS Shakespeare Society. To introduce the group here with us tonight is the principal of Hillsborough Middle School, Dr. Trabowski.
Good evening, Dr. Schiff. Thank you, and members of the Board of Education. It's a great pleasure to be here tonight. I brought an interesting and merry band of players for you tonight. At the middle school, I thought we had a wide range of extracurricular activities that could meet every single student's interest, but about six years ago, one of my teachers pointed out a glaring omission. She came to me, her name was Miss Christina Simons, and noted that the Drew University was hosting a Shakespeare festival, and she wanted to put together a group of students from the middle school to go and attend this festival, perform, and participate. And I said to her, as I looked at the information, I said, "This looks as though it's for high school students. Are you sure this is something we should do?" And she said, "Don't worry about it. I've got it all taken care of." And I said, "But, middle school students and Shakespeare, I really don't know that you're going to be able to gather middle school students after school to do Shakespeare." And she said, "No, don't worry about it. I've got it taken care of." And I said, "But I have no money to pay you. I have nothing, no stipend to give, no resources whatsoever. You're on your own." And she said, "Me thinks ye doth protest too much." And I couldn't argue with that. So I said, "Okay, go for it." That was six years ago. And we were the first middle school group of students to ever participate. It was their inaugural year of the festival. The New York Times was there. They did a great article about the festival. They were quite enamored by our young band of performers, the youngest there, and they were highlighted in the article and with photos and interviews. And for every year since that now, the last six years, we have participated. More middle schools have joined in the festival, I think because of our inaugural leadership there, and it's just a phenomenal little program that we do. Now, the idea, of course, is that the students are not necessarily dramatists, but just language arts enthusiasts. And the best way to learn and understand Shakespeare is to perform Shakespeare. And better still, to perform it in a twist or something that gives it its own flavor and makes it real for you. And that's a little bit what you're going to see tonight. Before I bring up the teacher, though, to set the stage for us, I just want to mention the names of the students. They're not all here tonight, but most of them are. So you'll see performing in just a few moments Christopher Blum, Emily Conlin, Aaron Donahue, Paige Novak, Rachel Sweetberg, who couldn't be here this evening, Faith Tarantino, Emily Van Pelt, and Becky Wendover. Now, some of those names, I must admit, are dramatists. They did just recently perform some of the leads in our Pirates of Penzance musical, and you'll see why they were the lead performers there, too. But they really are simply language arts enthusiasts. So let me, to set the stage, please welcome Miss Christina Simons. Christina, if you'll come up.
Thank you, Dr. Trabowski. Good evening, Dr. Schiff, members of the board. The scene is the Trojan War, so needless to say, it is obvious why some warriors might be bored. One of those warriors is Hector, and Hector has decided to throw down the gauntlet because he has nothing better to do. And Achilles, who is equally bored, decides that, well, there is no better man than Hector to meet him in battle. But of course, it is quite a ways to get to the actual scene of the battle. There is a great deal of comedy and sub-conflict in the process, which is why we chose it to be the focus of this year's performance of Troilus and Cressida. You will notice that neither Troilus nor Cressida are mentioned throughout our scenes because they just weren't nearly as interesting. Hector and Achilles, especially done in homage to the comedy classic Zoolander, are far more thought-provoking and kinetic to behold. And without any further ado, I would like to invite the board members to perhaps modify their seating arrangement to better take in the festivities, because it does get a bit Without any further ado, it is my honor, my thrill, and my pleasure to present the HMS Shakespeare Society performing scenes from William Shakespeare's Troilus and Cressida.
Mary, dear sir, is proclaimed through all our hopes that Hector, by the fifth hour of the sun, will with a trumpet twist our tents and Troy tomorrow morning call, some night to arms that hath a stomach that dare maintain, I know not what. 'Tis trash; otherwise, you newsman.
Oh, then beware! Those wounds heal ill that men do give themselves; omission to do what is necessary steals a commission to a blank of danger, and danger, like an ogre, suddenly taints. Even when we sit idly in the sun.
Go call thirsty hither, sweet Patroclus; send the fool to Ajax and desire him to invite the Trojan lord after the combat, to see it here unarmed. I have a woman's longing, an appetite that I am sick withal, just seeing great Hector is weeds of peace, to talk with him and to behold his visage, even to my full oblivion.
The fierce polygamist has beat down Menon. Bastard monorail and hath grace prisoner and stands colossus-wise, waving his beam upon the past courses of kings Epistophus and Sidious. Pleisthenes is slain! And Phoenikus hath always deadly hearts! Patroclus tamed! Or slain! And Palamedes sore! Hurt! And bruised! The dreadful Sagittary appals our members; hast we die by to reinforcement, or we perish all!
Go! Bury, transus, fight into Achilles, and for the snail piece Ajax, all for shame. There's a thousand Hectors in the field; now here he fights on Galatas' horse, and there lacks work, anon he is there afoot; and there they fly or die like scales cold to the melting whale; then he is yonder, and there destroy creeks right for his edge, fall before him like the moa swath. Here! There! And everywhere! He leaves and takes, the serenity so being appetite; that what he will, he does, and does so much, that proof is called impossibility.
O courage, courage, princes! Great Achilles is arming! Weeping! Cursing! Bowing! Vengeance! Patroclus' wounds have roused his drowsy blood, together with his mangled Myrmidons that knows those handless hactens ship come to him, crying on Hector. Ajax hath lost a friend, and foams that mouth, and his arms an attic, engaging every deeming of himself, with such a careless force and forceless care, as if that luck, in very spite of cunning, may win him all.
Where is this Hector? 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 Bueller? Come, come, thou boy color, show thy face! Know what it is to make Achilles angry? Hector? Where is Hector? I will none but Hector! Now do I see thee? Ha! Have at thee, Hector!
Pause, if thou wilt.
I do disdain thy courtesy, proud Trojan. Be happy that my arms are out of use; my rest and negligence be friends thee now; but thou art none shalt hear of me again. Till when? Go seek that fortune.
Fare thee well. I would have been much more fresher man had I expected thee.
Come hear about me, you my Myrmidons! Mark what I say! Attending where I will, striking not a stroke, but keep yourself in breath; and when I have the bloody Hector found, impale him with your weapons roundabout. In jealous manner execute your aims. Palamedes, and my proceeding's eye, it is decreed Hector the great must die.
Most putified, core, so fare without. Thy deadly armor has cost thy life. Now as my day's work done, I'll take good breath. Rest, lord; thou hast thy fill of blood and death.
Look, Hector, how the sun begins to set; how ugly night becomes breathing at its heels; and even with the veil and jarring of the sun to close the day up, Hector's life is done.
I am unarmed. Forgo, this vantage, Greek.
Strike, thou, strike! This is a man I seek.
It's a walk-off.
If you want to see who with the walk-off, come to Family Room's Night on Friday, June 8th. It's at the middle school in the annex cafeteria from 6:30 to noon, and there's free admission, food, and games.
Not you! But me!
Let's give another big round of applause to our Shakespearean club from the middle school. Wonderful job, kids. And thank you to everyone that supports that club. That was really quite remarkable. Bueller? Bueller? The second part of the superintendent's report is going to be to spotlight something that is near and dear to many of us, and that's celebrating a special group of kids. These are children that have autism, and one of our wonderful teachers in the district has developed a movie. And tonight, we're going to see a little bit of a preview of that movie called Touch by Autism. And to introduce her, we have our Director of Special Services. Lenore is here. Thank you. Let's greet her.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for having us here this evening. Can you hear me? April is Autism Awareness Month, and I'd like to introduce Tori Worgo, who is one of our teachers of autism at Triangle Elementary School. And each year, Tori highlights a special activity to celebrate Autism Awareness Month. This year, Tori has produced a documentary titled Touch by Autism, and I'd like to ask Tori to come up so she could talk a little bit about her wonderful project this year.
Good evening. It's such a pleasure to be here today, of all days, as April 2nd is nationally recognized as World Autism Awareness Day. Each year, along with several colleagues, we plan various activities for Autism Awareness Month. Two years ago, I presented to you a song that I had written with the help of one of our parents. It was called Walk With Me. Last year, I was able to come here and present to you a book that I had written along with an illustrator, Mr. Joe Dugan, from Woodford Elementary School, and that book was called Help Me Understand. This year, I wanted to go even bigger. A movie seemed fitting. On April 19th, presented by Velvet Robie Vents and Tusk Restaurant, we will have the world premiere of Touch by Autism. This film is an inspirational documentary on how our community embraces autism through the eyes of families, friends, and educators. It's extremely difficult to begin to share with you the overwhelming support that I have received throughout this endeavor. While I had the vision for this film, this by far is not my film. This film belongs to all of us in the Hillsborough community. So many people have come together to share their support for autism, and I believe that says something extremely special and unique about our township. This movie would not be possible without the support of many people, to include our administration, you, the members of the Board of Education, families, friends, members of the community, and educators. I'm forever indebted to a young gentleman by the name of Mr. Tom Cerisi. Tom is a senior at Hillsborough High School and a third-year advanced film student. Upon recommendation from his teacher, Mr. James Arnn, Tom volunteered his talents for this film. Tom gave 10 hours of his time after school and on weekends to run the camera for all of the interviews we completed. After we had over six hours of footage, Tom then gave countless hours of his time editing every piece of this film. It's evident that both his parents and the educators that Tom has had over the years in Hillsborough Township have done an extremely great job of instilling manners, professionalism, punctuality, organization, effective communication skills, and a vast amount of knowledge in the content area of filming and editing. I suppose that is the reason that in the fall, Tom will be attending his first choice school, NYU. I would also like to mention one more person who was paramount in the making of this vision of mine come to fruition. I wrote the lyrics for another song this year to be part of the movie. Unfortunately, due to other priorities, Mr. Newberger was unable to be a part of the new song. My husband reached out to a colleague that he teaches with, Mr. Joe Cassidy. Joe so kindly accepted the challenge with an extremely short deadline. He wrote the arrangement and created a beautiful song for my lyrics that will not only premiere with the movie, but on the evening of April 19th, he will sing the song live as a guest performer. This evening, I wanted to share with you a very short glimpse of this movie. What you're about to see is the actual introduction to the documentary. This is the first time anyone is seeing this footage, and if you'd like to see more,
My name is Jeffrey. I have autism. This is Dennis. He has autism.
I'm a teacher. I'm a teacher. I'm a teacher.
I am a teacher. I'm an instructional assistant, and I have been touched by autism.
I'm a teacher. I'm a librarian, and I'm a friend.
I'm a teacher and a mom.
I'm a teacher, a coach, and a cousin.
I'm a teacher and a tennis coach. I've been touched by autism.
I have been touched by autism.
I'm a personal aide, and I have been touched by autism.
I'm a psychologist.
I'm a physical therapist.
I'm a teacher.
I am a speech-language pathologist and a parent.
I've been touched by autism.
I am a teacher.
I'm an instructional assistant.
I'm a teacher.
And I have been touched by autism.
I've been touched by autism.
We are teachers. Have you been touched by autism? We are teachers, and we've been touched by autism.
I'm a friend.
I am a friend.
I'm a friend.
I am a friend.
I am a friend.
We are friends.
I'm a sister.
I'm a brother.
I'm a brother.
I'm a sister.
I'm a mother.
I'm a mother.
I'm a father.
I'm a dad.
I'm a mom.
I'm a pop.
I'm a mom.
I'm a dad.
I'm a grandmother.
This is my grandson Robbie. He has autism.
We have been touched by autism!
Thank you. Let's give Ms. Worgo another big round of applause for her work. Once again, Ms. Worgo, what's the day of the event?
April 19th.
April 19th at?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM at?
Tusk Restaurant.
At Tusk Restaurant. It'll be a great evening. I hope you can attend. Also, thank you, Mrs. Johnston, as well. Thank you. Mr. President, I just have a couple of items of big news. It's my pleasure to announce that Michael Son Woo of Hillsborough High School and Kristen Mail Branch of Hillsborough Middle School were among 19 middle and high school students honored for their achievement at the Paul Robeson Youth Achievement Awards reception on March 14th at Raritan Community College. Let's give Michael and Kristen a big round of applause. We also have two members of Team 75 from Robo Raiders who are here. I know that they did a wonderful job this weekend at a competition. I'd like to invite them up to the mic at this time, and they can share a little bit more details about the wonderful awards that our Robo Raiders won this weekend.
Hi. I'm Betsy, and I'm the Public Relations Manager for the Team Robo Raiders 75 from the high school.
And I'm James Prosky, the Team Secretary for Team 75.
And these ridiculous outfits are our competition attire, which we wear to our district competitions. The Robo Raiders went to another district competition in Mount Olive, and we had an amazing time this past weekend. Our robot did extremely well, and at the end of the qualifying matches, we were in 11th place. After our previous competition, we were extremely apprehensive about the success of our robot, but our pit crew and drivers pulled together and did a phenomenal job. They worked their hardest to make the robot functional, often working up to the very last second before the match started. We were picked by the fifth seed to be the second team in their alliance and helped them pick the third. Unfortunately, we lost in the quarterfinals, but the match was very close, and we were extremely proud of our drivers. They underwent enormous pressure, but stayed cool, calm, and collected, through it all, and played their hardest. This was also a great competition because of all the positive feedback received from the relationships we forged. Team 75 works collaboratively with two other teams where we brainstorm, share ideas, and give tips to each other. This weekend, we got much closer to these teams as we cheered for each other in the stands and helped each other in the pits. Our team exuberantly cheered for these teams and many others that we've helped over time and were recognized and thanked by the judges and the other teams. During downtime between the matches, the team was dancing in the stands and showing our enthusiasm and team spirit. Another team gave us an honorary team spirit award because of the excitement we showed throughout the competition. Not only was our exuberance noteworthy, but one of our parents, who volunteered at the competition, said she received numerous compliments from other judges, who praised our students as being the most polite, kind, and well-behaved students at the competition. Another time, a judge pulled our lead mentor aside to thank and congratulate him on being part of and leading such an outstanding team. The competition has two sets of judges, technical and non-technical. The technical judges, sorry, told us that they told the non-tech judges that we were the best team in the district in every aspect of the competition.
When our chairman's presenters gave the chairman's presentation, the judges were completely awestruck by our magnitude of the team and all of our outreach programs. They couldn't contain their amazement and continued to ask questions long after the time limit of the presentation has passed. All of our excitement accumulated when we won the Mount Olive District Chairman's Award, the most prestigious award first has to offer. The judges praised our community service, the donations we make, our STEM promotion, as well as our notable partnerships with Carrier Clinic, the ARC, and the Board of Education. They believed we truly embodied the first spirit and were honored to receive the award. However, we realized we cannot take all the credit for this award. We would like to thank you, the Board of Education and Dr. Schiff, for being behind us every step of the way. We would not have been able to do as many of our events without board approval and support. We'd like to also thank Dr. Schiff for helping us considerably with STEM advancement and for our STEM advocacy throughout the district. This reward not only afflicts chairman's presenters or Team 75, but the entire community for the promotion towards STEM fields. Thank you for everything you've done for us. Winning the chairman's award sends us to the Mid-Atlantic Regional Championship at Temple University on April 12th, 13th, and 14th, which could possibly qualify us for the Nationals in St. Louis, Missouri. If any of you would like to visit our team at the regional championship, we would be honored to have you and show you around the competition. We will be sending an invitation through email and looking forward to hearing from you. Thank you for everything you have done.
Thank you, Robo Raiders, and again, congratulations on your chairman's award. And moving on to the next leg in the competition, hopefully we'll do well there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, that's all I have to say.
I just want to point out, I don't see colored hair and painted faces. I... Ah, not tonight, but Sunday, huh? I saw the result of that at Sunday evening. I also want to point out that they said they were 11th, and I was told that on Sunday also, but you have to point out that it was 11th out of 40, and then it makes it significant that you're in the top quarter of the group there at the end. So there was a lot of teams up there. Very nice job. Is there any questions about the superintendent's report from the public? All right. Seeing none. Any questions about the superintendent's report from the board? All right. Moving on. We are on to new business. If there's any new business from the public, I will start with the public. Those wishing to address the board can do so at this time. We sometimes address the questions. Sometimes we refer them to administration or to a board committee or a future work session. Any new business from the public? All right. Seeing none. Any new business from the board? Mrs. Lay? Yeah. I just have a legislative update. So, an assembly bill did pass to allow a local referendum for charter schools. That means that the residents would be allowed to give their opinion and vote whether a charter school should open in their district. The Senate bill, well, there is none to vote on yet, and it's not likely either. So for it to actually pass, it needs to pass in both the Assembly and the Senate. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. Any other new business from the board? All right. Seeing none. I think we're ready to move on to our public input on the 2012-2013 budget. If the public would like to give input at this time? A lot less people than last year or the year before, so... All right. Seeing no one. Last chance. All right. On to the action agenda. I will take comments from the public at this time for the action agenda, and the board can comment during the action agenda. Seeing no comments. Dr. Schiff? Thank you, Dr. Paget. I ask for the board's consideration with the following motions under the heading of education: to approve the professional and travel related expenses curriculum writing as listed, to approve the following field trips, the HIP report. Your metsole. A1 through A4. All right. Mrs. Haas, would you like to move that?
I would be happy to move the education agenda, items A1 through A4.
Thank you. In a second, please. Thank you. Mr. Gillette?
I need to vote differently on A4.
Okay. We're going to separate out A4. Any other separations or... All right. Any other discussions on A1 through A3? All right. Seeing none. We're going to vote A1 through A3. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Ms. Bogachowski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Paget?
Yes.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the heading of Human Resources. I recommend board approval of...
All right, seeing no one. Last chance. All right, on to the action agenda. I will take comments from the public at this time for the action agenda, and the board can comment during the action agenda. Seeing no comments. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Dr. Paget. I ask for the board's consideration with the following motions under the heading of education to approve the professional and travel related expenses, curriculum writing as listed, to approve the following field trips, the HIP report, and that's all. A1 through A4.
All right. Mrs. Haas, would you like to move that?
I would be happy to move the education agenda, items A1 through A4.
Thank you. In a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Gillette?
I need to vote differently on A4, so can we separate?
Okay, we're going to separate out A4. Any other separations or? All right. Any other discussions on A1 through A3? All right, seeing none. We're going to vote A1 through A3. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Paget?
Yes. And I will take a motion for A4. Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on A4? All right, seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Abstain.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Ms. Lay? Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Paget?
Yes.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the heading of human resources. I recommend board approval of the residence policy for employees. Approve the resolution to add an academic support instructor. Approve the resignations and retirements as listed. The revised leaves of absence. Approve the revised long-term substitutes. The revised lunch aid appointments. Contract change. Transfer and change of, transfer and change of, in appointment. Rescinding of contract, leaves of absence, and approve the appointments of teacher, instructional assistants, long-term subs, after-school tutor, mentor, substitutes, volunteer library assistants, and the monitoring of special services post-secondary outcome process, and approval of employee settlement.
All right. Mr. Pulsifer? On behalf of the Human Resources Committee, I move that the board approve items B1 through B13 of tonight's agenda. Thank you, and I'll need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Pulsifer? Can we separate B? B11.7? Yes, please. All right, all right. I want somebody to come back after me a month from now. Volunteers, never mind. All right. Any other discussion outside of B11.7? We'll vote on that one separately. All right, seeing no discussion. We are voting on all of B except for B11.7. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Paget?
Yes. And I need a motion for B11.7. Thank you. In a second? All right. Any further discussion there? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Abstain.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Mr. Paget?
Yes, and thank you.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the heading of operations to approve the line item transfers, approve the agreement with schoolboard.net, which is a software system allowing us to publish, to publish our board agendas, and approve for second reading the board committee bylaw.
Okay. Mr. Gillette, would you like to move the items?
So moved.
Thank you. C1 through 3. I need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? At first, any separations? All right, good. All right, any discussion? All right. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Paget?
Yes.
And the informational items are listed for board review, and that's all we have on the action agenda.
It's almost like people want to get to a basketball game. That was unfair. All right. Moving on to old business. If there's any old business from the public at this time, you can approach the board, and we can answer you or refer you, and that sort of thing. All right. Seeing no old business from the public. We're going to go to old business from the board. I'm going to take the first shot because I just wanted to comment. I meant to say something about the policy about in-state residency. I think the law is illogical and misguided, but it is apparently the law of the land, and I guess we have to have a policy that conforms to the law. But I don't, I don't appreciate or approve of the original law. Is there any other old business? Yes. Daria?
I'm not sure if this is considered old business, but I remember in the beginning of the year, I brought up the issue of gym classes and how they're not mandatory at Montgomery and Bridgewater if the students meet a certain standards of exercise each week, and I know the education board is going to look into that. I was wondering if there's any word on that. I don't know if you can address it right now, but...
I will go, I will say that probably nothing will change this year, but I know that it's on the education agenda for discussion.
It's on our agenda.
Thursday.
Yes.
As a way, as for discussion.
Yeah. I mean, we've had it on our agenda for a while, but we sort of got hijacked with the budget stuff that was going on, but we're planning to talk about it Thursday morning.
Any other old business? Dr. Rosenberg?
Yeah, I asked the board's indulgence for about two minutes, so I can say a few words, this being my very last board meeting. I've been on the board for six years, and it's been a remarkable experience. I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone in Hillsborough for their support and confidence in me and for their support in our schools as we strive to make them better. Public education is an awesome responsibility, and we have a great school district. I'd like to say it's important to remember that one of the main reasons people move here, one of the main reasons Hillsborough's been named one of the top 100 places to live twice, is the quality of our schools. New Jersey's ranked third in the nation for the quality of its schools, and Hillsborough is in the top tier of all schools in our state. We can't lose sight of how much we've accomplished and still maintain a district with both a cost per pupil and an overall administrative cost that is far lower than the state average. I'm proud of our existing school leaders who do a great job every day to run our district and balance educational excellence with the financial realities of our time. I'm also proud of our thousand-plus staff members who have the most difficult job there is to take our children for 12 years and mold them into caring, productive, and intelligent citizens. Few things are more important, and they do it exceedingly well. I'm also proud of every member of this board and the previous five boards that I've served on for dedicating their time and energy to public service. In an age where everyone is suspicious of government, I'm thankful that people still step forward and volunteer to make it all work. And finally, and most importantly, I'm proud of our students who have and will continue to contribute to society in such positive and innovative ways. In the past six years, I have seen just how remarkable they are. I've had the privilege of celebrating six graduation ceremonies for 3,600 seniors, and I'm also grateful for the opportunity of being part of their most important day. Each year at that time, I'm asked to offer a quote or a wish for our graduates as they begin the next stage of life's journey. And every year, it's the same, from the famous 23rd-century philosopher, Mr. Spock. "It's a wish for all our children and families. Live long and prosper." Thanks so much for allowing me to be part of such a wonderful school district. Thank you.
Thank you. It's my last board meeting also, and I'll just agree with Dr. Rosenberg on all points and cede my time to him. But I will say that I must have shaken 1,800 hands. Goodness. And they were very excited. Squished my hand. So good luck. Any other old business? All right.
I would just, I would just like to mention, because it is our board presidents and vice presidents' last meeting, we do have board member recognition in June, but I think it is appropriate that tonight's your last meeting, that we recognize both of your service and express our appreciation on behalf of your colleagues, as well as a thankful community. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. I think we're ready to move on to an executive session. Where is the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of the laws in? Do we?
No action will be taken.
Okay. You'd think after three years I'd get this right. Where is the Open Public Meeting Act of Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting, of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey, as follows. The following matters to be discussed are the superintendent's and board secretary's evaluations. The matters discussed in the executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists, and no action will be taken at that meeting. So we'll be adjourning from that meeting at the end and not coming back into public session to do anything. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I will take a motion to that effect. So moved. Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed and abstentions? One word, abstain. All right. We are in executive session. We'll give everybody a...